Good evening. Welcome to the May 13, 2025, meeting of the Carrboro Town Council. This is a business meeting tonight, so there will be no formal action taken tonight, as well as no public comment. Councilmember Posada should be joining us virtually?
I've got a request from Councilmember Posada to, I guess, have his audio turned on? He says he can hear us. I'm not sure.
They'll take care of that, but he is already available. I think he was muted.
Is he there?
So there he is.
Councilmember Posada. Can he hear?
Eli Azar, can you hear us still?
Can't hear.
Tremendous.
I think he can't hear any. Maybe.
Councilmember Posada is maybe not hearing? Or is he hearing? I feel like he isn't. Okay.
I'm in contact. It seems like maybe the issue is on his end.
There he is.
Still nothing on your end, Eli Azar?
No, he doesn't hear a thing.
Coming universally. I'm struggling with IT.
All right.
Struck and trying to reestablish connection. They are controlling the.
It looks like he's still there. He's just turned his video off. There's still more participants on there on video.
Yeah, I think the other ones are upstairs.
Simon, this is Lamar. Are you able to get Councilmember Posada's volume taken care of?
I believe the issue is on his end. We're hearing it for another participant.
Hey Lamar, this is Piper. I'm on my way down, but yeah, I can hear. I think what it is is he may not have his speaker up.
Okay, thank you.
He says he's rejoining. I'll relay that feedback. Thank you.
Let's just see if we can get Councilmember Posada in the meeting. So he can hear. And we can hear him.
He has not come back in yet.
Just need some grits.
Oh, there it is.
Eli Azar, can you hear?
Okay, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we do have Councilmember Posada joining us virtually, and welcome Councilmember Posada. We also have Brady joining us, sitting in our town attorney's seat. So thank you, Brady. And town manager Tony, if you want to go to that first item for the work session?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item is to present a working draft of the downtown area plan and discuss completed community engagement, providing the town council with an opportunity to discuss and familiarize themselves with the proposed plan. Duncan Dodson is going to introduce this item.
Welcome Duncan.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Madam Manager. As Mayor Tony said, the purpose of the item tonight is for you all to get a look, to familiarize yourself with the draft plan as it stands so far. There are a lot of items attached to the agenda tonight. We tried our best to kind of signpost where areas of particular interest may be in the plan itself. I wanted to take a brief opportunity here to also speak to Laod Friesen-Nichols for leading the engagement on this effort, and to speak to a couple of opportunities that have come up throughout the project that the project team has taken to make sure that everyone has a role in participatory planning and visioning in this project. Those include working with the Jackson Center, the Racial Equity Commission, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Commission, attending Northside Neighborhood Meetings, Carrboro in Motion, working with our Race and Equity Team to connect with the NAACP, hand-delivering door hangers to all residents in historically Black and African-American neighborhoods, as well as sending postcards to all residents and property owners in the downtown area. And then looking forward, our next large community event that we're going to do is Juneteenth, on June 19th, bringing the plan out there. And then a final large community engagement event that we are placing strategically at the eastern end of the studying area close to the Lloyd Broad neighborhood. So with that, I will go ahead. Many of you have met Danny Wilson, but I will reintroduce him and let him take it away. And thank you for the opportunity to discuss this this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. As Duncan mentioned, I'm Danny Wilson. I know we met previously when we did some small group meetings. And I'm with Friesen-Nichols, where the consulting firm the town hired to work on this project. And we have enjoyed working with your staff very much. So this evening, I want to give you an overview of the project team and also an overview of the project itself, our process, how we got to where we are. And then we'll dive right into the plan. As Duncan mentioned, I know the packet was rather lengthy, and there are quite a few pages, so definitely feel free to ask. We do have the packet available electronically, so we can pull that up, and I'll look at it together if there are specific questions. And then we'll go over next steps of where we're going from here. So as I mentioned, I'm Danny Wilson. I'm the project manager with Friesen-Nichols. I'm based out of the Charlotte, North Carolina office. We have 34 offices in 10 states, 1,300 staff members over all disciplines, and we only serve public clients. We do no private work. So we're a public-facing group. With Friesen-Nichols, our main folks working on this project, Gail Ferry-Catalinas and Alexis Garcia, you see them on the screen. We also partnered with PSG. They were a local firm, actually in Chapel Hill. Amanda Klepper and Alan Steinbeck. Unfortunately, they dissolved as of the end of January, but they were instrumental in this project and have their fingerprints all on this plan as well. We work very closely with the town staff, as well as I know several of you on the advisory board group that we've met with a few times and gotten a lot of great feedback from there as well. So a real quick overview of the project. Why are we even doing the downtown area plan? So I'm sure you're all familiar with the Carrboro Connects Comprehensive Plan and that process. Downtown area plan was a priority project identified, and there are many elements of the Carrboro Connects that tie directly to the downtown area. Specifically, economic strategy, sustainability strategy 2.1A was looking at a small area plan for the downtown, which is why the town started on this process to begin with. The document itself, we have it formatted in two different volumes. Volume one, it's almost like having your dessert first. So volume one is where we have introduction, brief introduction of the plan itself, and then the master plan, which is really where the meat is. And then implementation, which is a chapter yet to be drafted, so that was not in your draft that you received. And that's really, those three are the main pieces you use every single day. Volume two has a lot of the background information of how we got to volume one. So we wanted to make sure it was approachable for the general public, and so people could just pick up and read volume one and get a really good idea of the goals and intent of the downtown area and the plan itself, and how the plan is designed to be implemented to achieve those goals. Volume two is really all the background, and for people interested in diving deep into different strategies, different engagement, and how the elements of volume one came to be. You can see those different sections up there, and we're going to look at several of those this evening. To start our study area, you can see on the screen the boundary with Chapel Hill on the right-hand side, or the eastern boundary of the downtown area. Follows along Main Street, and then also Jones Ferry Road, Greensboro, where it crosses Main, and then also Weaver Street, and of course, many other streets in the area. But those are the main roads cutting through the project area. So in our planning process, we have public engagement that runs from the very beginning all the way to the very end. You heard Duncan mention all the activities we've been working on. Also, staff has been going out independently and working on things as well, and getting the word out about the project and getting feedback. But we start with existing conditions analysis. It's what's on the ground today, demographic data, census data, the built environment. From our public feedback early on, getting vision and goals for the downtown area, what the community would like to see. We approach projects with no preconceived notions of the community. We want to hear what the community wants, so we can craft a plan that reflects the community's values, and that the community being built is what the community would like to see. We also then worked on character areas, and we'll talk about those in depth here. And then did representative renderings and strategies, which we'll also touch on. And as I mentioned, the last piece is implementation that really brings it home of how the plan, goals, objectives, strategies can be achieved through actionable items. As part of our background analysis, we also looked at the Carrboro Connects Comprehensive Plan. There is a lot of engagement that went into that project. And as I mentioned, there are numerous elements and strategies identified in the comprehensive plan that applied to the downtown area. In particular, there were items about affordable housing, ways to improve the transportation and multimodal network to increase mobility, having green stormwater infrastructure, reducing impervious coverage, looking at water and energy elements, economic sustainability, recreation, parks and culture, and providing more open space, looking at land use in particular, and then of course, climate action and environmental elements, all of which apply to the downtown area. So far, these are the events we've hosted. So far, these are the events we've hosted. So, some of the numbers are estimates, because at large events, we didn't actually count, so it was a sort of general, we wanted to underestimate versus overestimate, so I'd say these are very conservative, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to say we did more than we did, so, but we also wanted to estimate about how many people we reached out and connected with. So you can see almost 600 people so far, and as Duncan mentioned, we have several other events that we're going to be doing in the future as well. All of the public input, we then compile and create summaries, and also incorporate information in the second volume of the plan about the public engagement events and things we heard. So, on the packet you receive this evening, you do have all the full summaries from all of those events, the full data, so every single comment we received will be included in the plan appendix. So, it will be a rather lengthy appendix, but we want to make sure we're very transparent, and all of that information is going to be included. Public input, as I mentioned, is the central part of this project and this plan. We want to make sure that what is being drafted is what the community wants, and so, combining that with the Carboro Connects goals and plans and feedback is really what drove the drafting and how we got here. From our public input, we had six recurring themes that seemed to keep bubbling up with a lot of our events. Of course, there are a lot of other, you know, comments that were not in one of the recurring themes, but these were, has a lot of commonality between event and event. So, looking at more public spaces in the downtown area, affordability was a constant thing we heard about, both for housing as well as business space. Looking at the art, music, and entertainment, you know, Cat's Cradle, how can that be leveraged, and other similar activities downtown. Looking at mobility, access, and transportation, with understanding that people want to walk and bike more, want to feel comfortable doing so, and how we can look at that. Adding plants and green space in the downtown area, so not just green park space, but also incorporating more nature throughout. And then, keeping the historic identity of the community and allowing it to grow organically was also a theme that kept coming up. So, we start with the vision and goals, and I'm going to read this vision. I know it's a little bit long, but I know we're also live on this, so. The vision that we created based on the feedback we received is, Carboro's downtown area is a vibrant, walkable, and community-oriented space that balances preserving historic charm with thoughtful growth. The downtown area serves every Carboro resident with particular attention to Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and marginalized community members, as a place for daily needs, a place to gather with community, and a place to live. The downtown area fosters economic diversity, celebrates art and culture, and ensures accessibility for all. With the vision, we had five goals that are on the right-hand side, and the intent of the goals is, if you can achieve those five goals, you can really achieve the vision and move forward towards that vision as a community. So, the first goal, I'm not going to read these verbatim, but really building for climate resilience. Second one, looking at, as I mentioned, housing choice and a range of housing, affordable housing, workforce housing options, improving pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, also helping to reduce traffic congestion, supporting small businesses, entrepreneurs, and minority-owned businesses, and then maintaining the architectural integrity of historic buildings, while at the same time encouraging new investment in construction. The master plan chapter is broken out into three general areas. So, we have the character areas that we'll touch on in just a second, representative renderings that we'll also look at depth on, and then, streetscape typologies. The streetscape typology section looks at existing and then potential future. As you know, the streetscapes in the downtown area are extremely varied, and so, we did take a slice of specific areas, but that is very specific to that one slice. So, a lot of the elements in there, and which is true also of some other sections of the plan, are almost an à la carte of options for best practices, depending on the exact circumstance and scenario, because every property is very unique in the downtown area. When we looked at the, creating the character area plan, we looked, as part of our background analysis, at the downtown area, and there's some distinctive construction types, architecture, massing, building scale, building placement on properties, that we wanted to capture and look at, so that's how we developed the character area plan. The downtown core, more commercial uses, buildings closer to the street, generally narrow street, narrower streets. The core extension, in the lighter pink on the screen, are normally larger lots, buildings set a little bit further back, almost a little more suburban style, some more open space, it's not quite as developed. Surrounding neighborhoods are residential in nature, in particular, the Mill Village area has a distinctive style. And then, the Lloyd Broad Neighborhood, of course, is distinctive in and of itself, being a predominant Black and African-American historic community. So, we kept those four character areas, and each one of those, we looked at existing conditions, and then, set a future vision for those areas. That future vision had a brief description for what those areas might be, intended uses that would be appropriate, building types, building scale and placement, parking, and urban design. This is intended to help both the development community and the town, town staff, town-elected officials, town-appointed officials. When you have a project coming in, and they want to locate in the core area, let's say, and they have a parking lot shown in the front, you can go to this and say, well, the vision for this area is parking is in the rear, so, let's talk about rearranging your site, because we want it to be a walkable space, we want it to be pedestrian-friendly, or the building is one-story. And you look at this and say, the goal is two to five stories, to increase some density in the core area, so let's talk about adding some density. So, this is meant to be a tool to help guide development. It also helps the private sector, when they're looking at different areas in the downtown, to say, I want to build a four-story building, what part of downtown would support that? And then, they can come and start that conversation with staff, and ultimately, come to you all. We also did, selected five different sites in the downtown area, and did representative renderings. So, these sites that we selected are real, they are real property constraints that we designed against, but we blurred the edges, so you couldn't tell whose property it was. We didn't want to put out there to say, so-and-so, we're suggesting your property should be different than it is today, because that is not the intent. We were, again, trying to show some examples for the development community to see what would fit in the downtown area, and how development could achieve some of these goals. So, in the four private development options, we, all of them include affordable housing and a variety of different spaces and uses. All of them include some sort of public-private outdoor space. All of them include streetscape enhancements, incorporation of native plantings and trees, in particular, street trees, have varied architecture, or different scales and intensity, have sustainable elements integrated throughout, and then, have art as well. We also did one public space rendering for a potential downtown park space, and included a lot of these things. So, I'm just going to walk through these five real quick. I'll go right to left, I'm assuming this won't show up on the screen. Ooh, will it? Okay, great. But then I'm moving too far back. Hold on, sorry. Is that not going to work? Okay. Let me rearrange everything up here. Okay. So, this is a mixed-use development with a recreational focus. So, on the right-hand side, we have a stream, this is native replanting along the streambank and restoration, sort of like a nature area, has a parking deck in the back, so, all the sites do have parking, but this is tucked in the back, so cars can come to the site and park and get out, but it doesn't interfere with the actual site itself, creating an open lawn area, sort of just a casual space, a playground. This has retail and commercial uses on the first floor, also on the first floor over here. And then, the main focus of this is recreation. This is like a recreation center, could be a YMCA, something of that nature. You can see an indoor basketball court, that kind of spills out into a courtyard plaza space here, enhanced streetscape, wide sidewalks, bus shelter, right here at the bus stop, interior courtyard that really draws the public into the space. This shows a splash pad in the back, native plantings, inviting space, movie screen on the side of the parking garage for, you know, movie night in the plaza, and then, has residential on top, and then you can see solar panels intermixed on this project as well. This representative rendering shows a mixed-use development along a greenway or multi-use path. This has native plantings being pulled from the vegetated area into the space. The main focus is along the path, not the street, so this site opens up and encourages connectivity with pedestrians and cyclists on the path, has really unique branding, and some architectural elements kind of scattered throughout, a variety of spaces with residential above, you can see this one's six stories, and then, again, active commercial spaces on the first floor. This also has a parking garage in the back that ties into the public street back here, so again, accommodating parking. We wanted these to be realistic, so they actually could be developed, but also, follow best practices of how to make sure the site is enhanced for the pedestrian experience. This is a contact-sensitive development in the downtown core, so, this is on a corner. This shows how you can enhance the main street on the front here, is not Main Street, but the primary road on the front here, I should say, with colonnade architecture, having the private space spill out into the public space, street trees, again, activated first floor with commercial uses, and this has an office on the second floor, and then, residential above. This also has an alley through here that goes back to a parking garage, it's embedded inside and wrapped by the buildings, and you can see the steps down, this looks at, assuming there are some one-to-two-story homes on the right-hand side, further past these townhomes, that, how you can blend new development in with the existing and not overwhelm the existing development. So, you can see it stepping down, and then also, the character changing a bit as you get to the very edge, where it may blend in with some existing homes. We have a mixed-use development with quasi-public space, so this also looks at a corner and creating a vibrant corner that is actual open space, not dissimilar to Weaver Street Lawn, right? This is, but this would be on a corner treatment of it. Again, activated first floor with commercial, variety of commercial uses, restaurants, retail, whatever that looks like, office on the second floor, and then, residential above again, and this steps down, this is five stories and down to four stories, activated streetscape. You can see we looked at power lines as well, knowing that the cost to underground power is extremely high, so what would it look like if that remained above ground? So, that would mean planting street trees further back, not underneath the power lines, and then, sort of pulling the public realm a little bit closer into the private space. Gathering spaces, again, integrating native plantings, maybe some of these could be rain gardens into the space as well. With all of these private spaces, so this shows a step down, but it could easily be a step up when a developer comes and wants to talk. Maybe the development on the left-hand side is actually short, and on the right-hand side is taller, so, the elements of the plan help provide guidance for developers and staff. It's not meant to be, this is what you have to build, the intent is showing ways you can build that meet the elements of the plan, and provide that flexibility, sort of an à la carte menu to talk about how development in downtown will fit. With our downtown green space, very similar elements, widening sidewalks, put trees and street wells, this has interactive public art throughout the site, so maybe some music or some other things, bike rack, rain gardens, some integrated play structures scattered around, I don't know if you can see these little tubes in the hills, buried for exploratory play for children, splash pad or a spray plaza, so, it may not be a full-blown splash pad, it may be a plaza that has spray nozzles, you can just turn off and it's a plaza. Picnic areas and eating spaces, using trees and groups for shade, for natural shade creation, also having a multi-use and flexible pavilion, maybe for pop-up concerts or little plays or something like that, or when it's not being used formally, people can just run around and play on it, or sit underneath it and enjoy the shade offered by the structure, and then, connection back into the neighborhoods as well. So, the next chapter, we're looking at strategies and considerations. This is where the last chapter that you have in your draft plan. So, this has a lot of information, general information and best practices, as well as overarching strategies and a variety of considerations for a whole host of topics. I listed a few on the right-hand side of the slide. I know when you go through the plan, you'll see, this is a lot of information, and this is directly tied to the representative renderings of, you know, providing recommendations for public art, having public art, you know, some best practices to make it interactive, have it be unique, maybe provide, you know, for different types, and same with landscaping street trees, all these topics. And then, we take this information, and really looking at the implementation plan, which is the last piece, as I mentioned, that you do not have, that we've not drafted yet, and we marry implementation plan with the rest of this document and the public comments we've gotten to look at specific items. The implementation plan is very specific, and it's almost a checklist of things that you can go through every year in your CIP to look at, should we do, you know, implementation 1.03? And then, that is directly tied to a lot of these elements. So, that is our next step, is continuing to edit this plan, and then also, draft implementation chapter. We do have continued engagement, and then we'll be back before you for adoption recommendation and consideration a little bit later this year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you so much, Danny, for the presentation. Councilmembers, are there questions or points of clarification? Councilmember Frey, and Councilmember Posada, I know you're there, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a few questions, some of which are based on the presentation you just provided, and some of which are based on my read-through of the longer document. Just a couple really quickly to orient me. When you're talking about historic buildings, what's the definition you're using for historic buildings?
So, we look at anything on the National Register, anything in the historic district, to be bona fide historic, but as far as historic architecture, it could also be buildings that have just been here a long time. They may not be designated historic technically, but things that look like they've been part of the community for many, many years.
If you were going to go with a rough, with an approximate year before which, you'd probably say, oh yeah, that's probably historic, even if it's not on the register in the district? Is there, just to get a sense of how you're thinking about it?
So, we've looked at it and talked with staff, and the Mill era, right? So, late 1800s to early 1900s, technically historic is anything over 50 years, which puts us in the mid-'70s. So, but again, that's the technical definition. Trying to look at the historic fabric of the community and...
It's a very generous definition. And I think that's sort of getting at what I was asking about, because as an example, in some of our downtown historic districts, we have some buildings that have been profoundly renovated, well within that 50-year range, but they fall within a historic district. So, I was trying to get a sense of how that influenced your classification of character areas in particular.
So, not, no one building influenced. We tried to get the sum of the whole, and the feel of the whole, so if a whole block, if one building on a whole block had been modified, it really didn't change the fact that that one block felt a certain way, or fit and was built a certain way. If, you know, four of the five buildings had been modified, it would have...
Thanks. I'm sort of getting at the, at the Mill Village in particular here, where we've got an area which is obviously a historic area of town in one of your definitions. You know, most of the original buildings constructed in the early 1900s, does have an overlay district, but, large chunks of that, whole blocks of that have been overhauled such that they wouldn't meet your, your sort of year-based definition. So, I was just trying to understand how that fell in.
Yeah.
When you were coming up with your proposed sort of heights for the different areas, did you consider cost of construction in there at all? I know there are some sweet spots, depending on what materials are being used for buildings that make certain heights make more sense than others. Did you consider that at all when you were putting that together?
So, we did and we didn't. We didn't do any performos or look at specific numbers, but heights from two to six stories...
We didn't do any performos or look at specific numbers, but heights from two to six stories are generally affordable for construction. There is a, right, a line in there where you switch from wood to steel that changes costs dramatically, but also depends on the use of the building and many other factors. So...
Did that, I know when you, you showed the renderings, you said that you tried to make sure that those were buildable. Did you factor that kind of thing in considering the different uses, for instance, or the height of your ground floor, things like that? Did you bake any of that logic in when you were thinking about those renderings?
We did, again, to an extent. We didn't do a, you know, detailed analysis of any of the costs, but yes, from locating different elements to architectural style, to massing and scale, trying to look at what would be feasible for a developer that, who could actually build it and not suggest something that was wholly outlandish or wouldn't fit on a site or wouldn't actually be buildable at all.
Okay. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the process of generating those renderings. I noticed that, so I know that you, you got some feedback from the advisory boards on those. Did you ever take those renderings out for your, your general public feedback?
We took them out to the stakeholder groups for feedback, yes, ma'am.
Did you find that you got different feedback from the stakeholders versus from the advisory boards on those renderings?
Offhand, I'm going to say no. We did get some feedback. I know that was, there was some desire to have more varied architecture. I know there was even brought up, for example, of wanting a multifamily building that looked like a treehouse. So to that extent of architecture, there was a little bit different from stakeholder groups that we did not hear in the advisory board. But I don't think any other large discrepancies. There were elements, there were things we heard that we then incorporated in the renderings as well. So the only one that sticks out to me is that one architectural design comment.
I think that answers all my sort of like questions to help orient me to the, to the larger document because I know we're going to give you more feedback beyond just tonight. But I did have one particular question, getting into the, the draft document. I really liked your streetscape typologies where you're laying out what's the current layout of a, you know, a representative street in, for instance, the downtown core. And then you're saying, well, based on the uses that we want to make in the downtown core, here's what that street might look like in the future. Something that stood out to me, I was actually really pleasantly surprised, reading in particular about the downtown core area, you, you highlighted, and I, I'm going to, I'm going to paraphrase this wrong, that the primary user in the downtown core is the, is the non-vehicular user, right? And that you talked about narrowing streets so that vehicular traffic in that space would be cautious and would be yielding by default to pedestrians, as an example. Is that ringing a bell?
Yes.
Okay. What surprised me then, when I looked at the, the example, street typologies, was that none of them actually showed narrowing of travel lanes. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how you put those streetscapes together and how you thought about the relationship between the stated goals and what your streetscape should look like.
Sure. So I assume you're referring to the actual section itself? Okay. It, and I'll have to go back and look, I don't know offhand, but it very well may be the section, specific locations chosen were in locations that the narrowing of lanes wouldn't fit in that particular place, or a project had just occurred where the curb-to-curb was kind of set, including the lane widths. So we focused more on the sidewalk and making sure bike lanes were added and sidewalks were enhanced. That's definitely something we can go back and, and take a look at in particular.
Okay. I really would love to, to hear a little bit more from you on how you square that because I think the representative streets you picked were really good representatives, but I noticed that none of them actually involved any narrowing. So I didn't know if there were, then I was trying to get a sense of, okay, this is a really good goal in the downtown core to, you know, it was actually a really strong statement in favor of slowing traffic and prioritizing safety in the downtown core, but then that wasn't reflected in any of the, any of the cross-sections. So I was wondering, is there a different street that would be more representative of that effort? Or is there actually a tension or a conflict between the sort of textual goal that we're claiming to carry out and then how that would actually look in our cross-sections?
Okay. We can definitely take a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Frey. Other questions, councilmembers? Councilmember Merrill?
I just wanted to kind of piggyback off that to just, yeah, would love to see narrower travel lanes, even if it is just paint. I mean, if we're not changing the curb-to-curb, but we're just putting, you know, we're painting buffers between the bike lane and the car travel lanes, just to, to narrow that kind of visual effect for drivers and, yeah, slow the design speed, just kind of make drivers naturally more cautious.
Thank you, Councilmember Merrill. Any, any other comments or questions? Councilmember Haven O'Donnell?
Yeah, thank you for this. It took a lot to go through it. There's, there's a lot of material here, but I don't know that I completely satisfied, you know, the processing of all of it because it's, yeah, there's a lot of material here. So a couple of questions. One is just overwhelmingly, I, I got to ask about commerce because I didn't get a good feel, I can see residential density, but what is, what kind of dedication will there be to the commerce needed?
So in the, there's information peppered throughout, especially in the strategies and considerations section regarding encouraging a variety of spaces and uses for commercial businesses to keep affordable spaces and also not only potentially consolidating some larger, some smaller lots into larger, there are a lot of small lots in downtown, I know everyone is aware, which is an awesome asset to have. It allows for a lot of small businesses, a lot of startup opportunities, affordable rent. But then at some point, businesses also reach a cap where they don't have space to grow. And so in order to keep those businesses downtown, because that's what you want, right? You want them to start there, you want them to stay there, you want them to continue to stay in, in the heart of the community, looking at how some of the larger lots can be retained as larger, because there are only a handful of larger lots in the area. And so not encouraging those to be divided further, but encouraging those maybe to have some larger spaces so businesses can, can start in a smaller space and grow and then move into a larger space. We also have elements talking about how the opportunities the town has to help support when redevelopment does happen, because we know it will eventually, right? And the business may get displaced, how they can be displaced locally and not displaced out of the community. So how can they stay in the downtown area temporarily while where they used to be is being developed and then potentially move back? And we know, talking with Economic Development Department folks and, and looking at other opportunities, we talked through some of those strategies of how the town may be able to assist in that regard. And also making sure the focus is on daily needs businesses, not just, not boutique businesses, not businesses that only offer high-end goods, but have daily services because the intent of the downtown is to live your life, right? It's for daily living. You can live there, you can work down there, you can meet all your daily needs. So having spaces that encourage, and again, I know it's hard because you can't say, this storefront has to be X, this has to be Y, but having some, some overarching goals and language in here that that's, that the intent of the community is to have all daily services to be able to be met in the area and a variety of spaces at different price points as well for businesses, the same as residential.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly what I thought it was missing from the renderings because the renderings do not show me where daily life needs are included. And yet, on the feedback showed the, one of the first, the basic needs was the largest interest. I don't know whether I, it's a high 70% or whatever. Can you go to that slide for a moment? I have it on attachment page 92. No, sorry. No, that is not the one. It's like a graph. Anyway, it just shows that that's the key interest of folks, to be able to shop for the things that they are most interested in downtown. So I did not see renderings that suggested that Carboro would be moving in a direction that could meet those needs, at least from the renderings. That's number one. Number two, I didn't see anything about a micro-transit hubs because Carboro cannot survive on the folks who live in the, the area that's in that downtown shaded area. It is dependent upon people coming in. It's dependent upon being a destination. And therefore, if we want to reduce vehicle use, car-vehicle use, there needs to be micro-transit hubs, not to mention the fact, we haven't even talked about how that can happen, but that needs to happen. I know there, I know, I think it's down in Selma, the mayor is, is working on creating micro-transit that is viable. I think that's part of this conversation that's critical because you cannot create an environment that is based on purely residential folks walking and biking, you know, to, to be sustainable financially. So those were the two biggest takeaways, but I, like I said, I, I really went through this rather quickly because it's, it's huge. I love the fact that there's a lot of attention to tree canopy. And I, I would just say, how do you, how do you suggest, you know, the town tackle that when so much of it is private business? And in addition to that, trees take 20, 30 years sometimes. You know, our most fabulous legacy trees are almost 100 years old. So what, you know, it's, it's great to look at these and see it fully developed out, but what happens in the interim? You know, what are the, the ways that we can provide that same kind of look and feel? And finally, the other point I would make has to do with the question of character because I'm not really clear on, and I'm really glad Councilmember Frey mentioned the Mill Village, because it's more than the Mill Village. There's one rendering you have that shows, I don't know, it's a three or five-story building right next to, yeah, that's it, next to a, you know, a house which would, could be, the, the architecture is vernacular, so it could be, it could be a brand-new house, but just looking, you know, having that feel. And I know that these are just renderings of what could be in terms of step-back in height. Given that, how, how does the town go about redeveloping and incorporating those feels? So that it's not, you know, if you go down a certain block, you're going to have it, but another one you won't. Charlotte is a very good example of that, where you've got these mega skyscrapers, you know, bumping up right next to, you know, within the same block of, you know, on West Trade Street comes to mind in that area. So how would you answer?
So, yeah, it's a very good question and definitely it's going to be a challenge. You know, again, the small lots also make that a little bit interesting. This was an example that we wanted to show, so the, the townhomes on the right-hand side are actually intended to be with this development. So, and then the existing homes would be further to the right. And in this site, we, we looked at, there were single-family, one-to-two-story homes immediately adjacent, which is why then this sort of builds in the similar architecture with some style before you go into the, the larger, more urban context to help ease it into the existing neighborhood. But a lot of that is going to be, honestly, with your, your next topic here, about your UDO update, as far as the regulatory piece.
Right. But I just thought it was interesting that you, through the downtown plan and the draft, the question and the acknowledgement that, that character matters came out, and that's why I asked. Yeah, I, I do understand that. One last question regarding commercial. You know, the, I mean, how much conversation should we be having about what do we want our commercial portfolio to look like? Because that is also critical. And you mentioned the cat's cradle. Cradle's actually going to be redeveloped. The cradle's a perfect example of hospitality, which is key in Carboro. But we also know that several of the small business owners can't make it on hospitality. And so, you know, how does, how do we, I mean, or what would you recommend to council in terms of having a conversation and being able to, you know, build a, an economic development plan that is incorporated with this downtown, this downtown plan? So for example, there's parcels that the Economic Sustainability Commission has talked about in terms of creating these different nodes. That should be part of this because for those of us who've had those conversations with the Economic Development Commission, you know, we should all be on, on board with what is possible. So that goes back to my earlier comment about, you know, being, commercial being in the renderings and without names, naming parcels, but knowing that there are parcels that are, are perfectly situated and have enough space to create, you know, economic hubs.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Haven O'Donnell. Appreciate, oh, so no. Anyone else with any questions? I do want to say that while councilmembers may be thinking about whether they have more questions, that you will continue the, the public engagement phase. I guess I could ask, we, we all know that we have community members that are keenly tuned in to everything that happens, you know, here at Town Hall, which we appreciate. And certainly there are those who are not timid about local government coming to Town Hall or any type of scenario like that. I appreciate you making the effort for our BIPOC community. And I just was wondering how you felt at this point about how your engagement has been going as it relates to those that we don't hear from very often, but, but live here in this community?
So I think working with PSG, with Friesen Nichols and town staff, I think the outreach has been very robust. I know Duncan mentioned a lot of the efforts at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think we've heard from all the members of the community that we would like to, which is why we're looking at our upcoming events being held where they are and with the Juneteenth event and, and trying to make sure we provide ample opportunity for every member of the community to provide feedback. Of course, we can't force anyone to tell us stuff. We can just make sure that they know that we are wide open to hearing from them and would love to hear feedback from anyone and everyone in the community because everyone's voice matters. And we want to make sure we incorporate their thoughts and feelings and desires for how the downtown area develops moving forward. And just try to have the welcome mat out as much as we can and make sure the community knows that their, their feedback is welcome.
And so, is it PSG? Did you say they, they dissolved?
They did, unfortunately.
And so their work was done with you when they, when they dissolved so you wouldn't need to hire anyone again? So their work was complete as far as this project?
We did not, we do not need to hire anyone again. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have a, Councilmember Frey?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, thanks for taking my detailed questions. And just to sort of summarize, I found this plan, the draft plan, quite interesting and helpful for visualizing conversations we might want to have, you know, with our other consultant around the UDO rewrite. Overall, I think that what I saw was a little bit less dense than I was expecting, and a little bit more concerned with visual context than I was hoping for. And I say that because as I'm looking at your set of goals, it's not that we want the downtown to be insensitive to neighboring context, but equity and anti-displacement are considerably more important than the visual, right? Because if you, how can I put it? It's entirely possible to have a town that looks like it respects that historical context and welcomes in neighbors who have been longtime residents, but actually, it's a bit of a theme park, and the longtime residents have long since moved out because they couldn't afford to stay. So the affordability and the equity components of it, to me, have to take, have to take on some additional weight compared to that context. But it was interesting, because I think some of your renderings were a little bit denser than your guidelines for the same areas, and some of those were quite pleasant. I think the one along the bike path was probably the one I thought did the best job of capturing the feel. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that shakes out with your future, future adjustments to that draft.
And I will say, so one of our survey questions, and I know in one of your 17 attachments to your staff report, the memo, their review, has on page five, survey question data that looked at height in particular. So that was one thing that we did ask, trying to gauge the community's tolerance for tall buildings. And you can see, I mean, most people were, you know, in the, up to three stories, three to four. So more than five in the downtown central business district was 24% of the respondents. So 76 people wanted less than that.
I'm not at all surprised about that. My question is, how does that? I imagine that people rated affordability very highly. I'm guessing you didn't offer them a question like, would you rather have three stories and it be twice as expensive, or six stories? You probably don't have any data yet that helps people think about density in the context of affordability. I don't know if that's something you're able to get in future outreach. But that's sort of where I'm going with that. Like, I completely, I'm not at all surprised that that's what folks are saying. Personally, I find that that, you know, that three-to-six, that three-to-six-story spot, that feels really, you know, comfortable and human-scaled. But as we're thinking about where we step down from that height, or how we relate to adjacent areas, it has a huge impact on affordability, and that's been front of mind for me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think I will just draw an underline, I mean, you know, in a couple, you know, I was, I tend not to think too much about aesthetic and character considerations. I think some of the discussions that we are having here, I think Councilmember Frey, like, illustrates a great point. And it sounds a lot like the conversations that we have with neighbors, which is where kind of these two abstract values compete on affordability, which is always what we hear, and then character, which is usually like the second or third, depending on who you're talking to. All to say, I think like, for my personal calculus is, I tend to be pretty dismissive of the idea of character and like sensitivity about height. Because I think, you know, what so many people like about our downtown is just, you know, the familiar phenomenon. People hated brownstones in Brooklyn when they were built. You know, people tend to react very strongly to change and to become very fond of it pretty quickly. That said, I was pretty surprised by the feedback that you received from the planning boards, or not the planning, the joint advisory. I was surprised by the strength of the reaction to the initial renderings. I appreciate the work that you've done to kind of make them a little bit more, I guess, usable, hand-feel. They're a little less austere. They're a little less every-place, in the way that, and I think that that's valuable. I recognize the needle you're threading, and trying to sort of find the right level of specificity to not overly intimidate, but to give some concrete for what we're looking for. All to say, this is long-winded context to say, you know, we have a lot of these conversations, and I think it's valuable for you to hear, that I am particularly interested and will continue to advocate for, and I think, you know, as we push toward completion here. We have heard that community engagement. We will hear that community engagement. It's really valuable that we have it, and it's, I think, given us a lot to think about in terms of the way that, like, we are sensitive to each community member's kind of varying comfort points with things. Don't worry about that 24% too much. As we, you know, like, we want affordability. And I think we have a sense for what it's going to take, from a lot of conversations that we have with a lot of people one-to-one, to make those secondary considerations, not necessarily front of mind. And I, for what it's worth, for my personal read here, I actually think we're pretty, maybe we're a little warmer on these renderings than maybe Councilmember Frey feels. I just wanted to jump in and say, you know, we understand that caution too, and we, I think, are interested in taking responsibility for it while we really push on the affordability.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now I see you, Councilmember Posada.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think more of my questions are kind of more on the, kind of, community engagement piece of it, but I did want to also echo the sentiments of the Mayor Protem, as well as Councilmember Frey, specifically on affordability. I won't go deeper on that. They've already done a really good job, kind of, speaking to that point. I wanted to ask a couple of questions around engagement, right? So I was looking at the materials, and they're quite extensive. So I appreciate that. But I haven't gone through everything. But I was looking specifically at the engagement, and who has been contacted to be part of some of the surveys and some of the conversations. So first, I wanted to say, specifically when it comes to like Hispanic and Latino, Latinx engagement, it's been, I think it's been really great. And I saw some of the pieces that were in Spanish. I think at the Latin American Festival, if I'm not mistaken, or one of the pieces. I'm curious, outside of kind of that piece in Spanish, are there even other conversations in multiple languages? You know, we do have quite a large community that doesn't speak either English or Spanish, and I wanted to play as a primary language, and I want to check in on how that's going, and I might have missed it.
Not sure. Duncan, would you mind speaking on, because I know town staff has done a lot of outreach efforts. Would you mind?
Yeah, absolutely.
Speaking on that?
Thank you. Just to highlight, Councilmember Posada, we've made sure that we've had translators at all of our large events, and produced all of our written materials in English and Spanish. We've also worked heavily with communication and engagement, as they've set us up with the Language Line service. And we publicize about that at our events and work with Kat and Eve on that. We haven't had anyone who has used that service. But we did, when we launched Social Pinpoint for this project. We did make sure that Social Pinpoint also included tools to translate that survey into Korean, Burmese, Arabic, as well as Spanish, of course. And so there, that is not to say that the work is complete, but we have tried to make language access a central piece of this project.
No, and I appreciate that deeply. I think that's a great step. And I appreciate the staff and everyone working on this project, on that. I know that is, we continue engagement. I wonder, who are some of the community partners who might be able to also kind of deliver that message? I know that specifically when we were doing kind of Spanish-language work at the town, it took quite a number of efforts for multiple people to kind of build trust into that system. So, and again, sorry if I missed it or it's in the packet, but I just kind of want to follow up on that piece. Like, what does engagement with partners, specifically outside of kind of English and Spanish, look like?
Yes, we've worked pretty extensively with the Refugee Community Partnership to work with some of our Burmese and Korean-speaking community members. And then, I know that this is not necessarily a specific language, but again, with communication and engagement, as well as race and equity, we are continuing to reach out with community partners, including El Centro, but also the Marion Cheek Jackson Center, as well as the NAACP, who oftentimes will have kind of more of their foot in the door with different community organizations and community members. So the Refugee Community Partnership has been a huge part of that, and we are continuing to work to build relationships with other community members and community organizations as well.
No, thank you for that. Again, I think, including different sectors of our community in this piece is key for me, and as I look at continued engagement and looking deeper into some of these policies, or, you know, this plan, I want to make sure that we're continuing to engage folks, and, you know, where they're at in community. Outside of that, I have some broader questions, but I don't really have kind of the words to put it into it. So I might just follow up through emails, once I've got a little bit more time to digest it fully. But I like the overall, kind of my feeling on this, is I like the way it's going. I want to see kind of affordability being a key piece of this. I'm curious about, kind of, that balancing act of character versus affordability is a big issue. I think, I don't know if I'm as dismissive as the Mayor Protem of kind of character, but I'm also not as concerned, deeply concerned with character. I don't know. Kind of figuring that out as we go through this. The renderings were very helpful, so I will say that. And, yeah, just thank you for the work being done. And let us know if there's anything, either staff or anyone working on the project, if there's any connections that we can make in order to kind of be more inclusive of different folks in the community as well. Not that we don't want to include other folks, or like, you know, not include people, but sometimes these projects, we hear the same folks, the same conversations over and over, and I want to make sure that we're opening the door and making as much possible, as easy as possible for folks. We don't typically listen from to put their voice in the hat, or whatever the saying is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Posada. Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo that, thanks for the renderings. This is actually the third time that I've seen some renderings. And it's really clear that you all are iterating and incorporating feedback. And I think in some of the places and times that I've seen people interact with them, folks have gotten very hung up on the notion that a rendering is a place that we are trying to make, rather than a, an example of different elements that we might incorporate. And so I just want to make sure that we echo back out to the community that if there's something you don't like about this, don't worry, we're not building that tomorrow. And in fact, nothing like that might ever be built. It really depends. And as I see someone in the audience who reminded me, it's about heads and beds. That some of the businesses that we want to see to be able to just live our lives in Carboro, no set of incentives, no building height, is ever going to get them here without us taking some specific steps. And so that's, I'm going to zoom in on, let's see, what page is this? It's Attachment A, page 105, and what I've got, and if I zoom back out, it's under the Strategies and Considerations document. So I don't know if that's, I don't think that was part of what we covered in your presentation. But what I, yep, no, that was it. So I see, I see two different interventions on the right. Their creation of a municipal services district jumped out at me, and public-private partnership jumped out at me for different reasons. And so, two different questions. The municipal services district, I know Chapel Hill has some, is, other than like a parking deck, what is an example of a reason that we might want to consider doing that? To get the sort of lifestyle businesses that we're thinking of, we need this in Carboro, we don't have this now.
So, great questions. This, let me back up and say, so these are general strategies that, again, feed into implementation. So if looking at a municipal service district is something of interest, one of the implementation steps would be evaluating municipal service district, its extents, funding, how it's staffed, all those sorts of things. These are examples of strategies that communities can use to achieve some of the goals identified in the plan. So municipal service districts, they can do a lot of different things. It really varies from community to community. Sometimes it's purely advertising, just for businesses. They do business support, so they can be, and just, anyone listening, or if this is recorded and posted online, a municipal service district is a special tax district that's created. It's created by the elected officials, and it's an additional tax on top of the current taxes, only for a specific area in town. And when you create those, you have to identify the tax rate and how that money's being used. And everyone, every community uses it, as I mentioned, a little bit differently. Sometimes they're staffed. Sometimes you create its own organization that is staffed. It's really common with the Main Street, tying it with the Main Street program. Sometimes it's just part of the town. And it could be beautification, it could be landscaping, it could be hanging baskets, it could be infrastructure. You can use those funds for a lot of different things. It just has to be used in that, in the district itself. And the cost or tax on top, it varies widely as well, depending on the services being provided. And the public-private partnerships, again, those can run the gamut. It can be everything from, the town owns a piece of property, and you want to see a certain type of development, so you partner with a developer to build that. And as part of that, the property is transferred to the developer, or sold to the developer. And it could be a simple improvement being made to an intersection, and you do a public-private partnership and a development agreement tied to do smaller projects. So again, that runs the gamut of scale as well.
Thank you for that clarification. I really appreciate that. So that's several steps down the line in what we're looking at with this downtown area plan project, which, if either of those, would make sense for us to meet our goals. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions, colleagues? All right, thank you, Danny.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Definitely, please feel free to pass any feedback to staff, and they can make sure that that gets over to us as well. So thank you.
Town manager Tony, the next item, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item is to provide an update about the LUO rewrite. Now, the Unified Development Ordinance. Tina Moon is going to introduce the item and the consultant.
Welcome, Tina.
Good evening. Thank you. Pardon me? There's another presentation? It's the purple one, that's it. Great.
Okay, thank you. This will be a shorter presentation, and we've heard your interest in having kind of incremental updates on how the project is going. And so this is an opportunity to have one of those now. We have Chad Meadows here to provide an update. And if there is interest and time at the end, if he wants to ask a couple legislative questions, he was pretty well informed about that. So, Chad?
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, pleasure to be before you guys. I'm Chad Meadows, and I am, I'm with Code writing. We are the lead firm on your Unified Development Ordinance rewrite. So we are changing up the name just a little bit, recognizing that our intention here is to create a document that soup-to-nuts handles everything with respect to the development review and regulatory process, Unified Development Ordinance. So what I'm here today to talk to you guys about is, what have we done? I was here before you in February, and so this is a follow-up visit. We want to tell you a little bit about what we've done so far, what we've heard, what we're working on, and what happens next. And as always, stop me with any questions that you may have. And forgive me for my inability to operate the prowess on the computer there. We'll see how things go when the time comes. So I'm going to, yes, the next slide. So as I mentioned, we were here in February. Since then, what have we done? Well, Well, we've advanced several slides. Okay, there we go. We're good. We've gotten the webpage up. So Engage Carrboro has a social pinpoint site associated with this project. So there's details on what we're doing, why, some of the background material that's been prepared up to this point. So that's been launched since our last visit. We've had our first public forum, which actually consisted of a couple of days, an evening and a day in this room in March. We had about 20 folks come out across those two days, participate with us on a handful of questions, and provide us impact. Then, we had an opportunity, thankfully to the staff and to the town, we had an opportunity to participate in Earth Day Open Streets. So we set up a table there and had a great deal of feedback, actually. We had 44 folks come by, stop by the table, and participate with us. So that was wonderful, and I think what it highlighted for us is our need to be open and flexible and make ourselves available for folks to participate in this project on their terms. And that means probably more community facilities, more community activities, and not so many public forums, sort of stuffy-room sorts of events. So we're leaning into that. We're also hoping to lean into some more video and web-based stuff to meet people where they are, create opportunities for people to participate in this project at their leisure and in amounts that they feel are appropriate. We have also conducted a series of additional interested-party meetings. As you guys may recall, when we started this project, we identified eight, 10, 12 groups of folks that we were going to meet with. One of the things that we asked all of those folks was, who else should we be talking to? And so we've conducted that additional meeting. We'll be appending our interested-party discussions with the information that we collected during that discussion. We have also gotten the initial draft of the Town of Carrboro Market Analysis from our economic consultant, Noel. And this document gives us a lot of background and detail on population, on demographics, on economy. It is our intention for them to help us understand demand and capacity. In other words, what kind of development, what's the amount of development that Carrboro could reasonably expect in the next 20-year window based on Carrboro Connects and so forth? And, concomitantly, where are we going to put it? How are we going to accommodate growth and development that we would anticipate in the coming 20 years? So Noel and their folks are, have put together this first run at just the basic market analysis. They have not yet given us the, what does it all mean? What we have at this point is, here's the data, here's the information, and we're waiting to receive the, and the so what is blank. And as soon as that's available, we'll pass that on to you and to begin to discuss the ramifications of that on this project. Okay? So that's another aspect that's taking place. We've continued to track legislation. It is a very, very active legislative session. We have seen legislation that has been very concerning to us, to you, to everyone. We have some happy news, and I'm happy to talk a little bit more about some of that stuff if you're interested at the end of this brief discussion. I will say this, much of this legislation is so very impactful that it will influence the nature of the recommendations that we want to make to you in the code diagnosis. There will be some recommendations in the code diagnosis, the next deliverable in this process, that have, that turn on what is the legislative direction that we're looking at, what's the likelihood of, you know, this stance, that stance, this change, et cetera. So we're attempting to read those tea leaves, but I'll just comment that, you know, that's very difficult to do, and we are keeping an eye on it, we'll keep you appraised of it. But there's definitely foundational, formational aspects in the legislation that will influence how we go about creating your U D O and achieving some of the goals that we seek to achieve. There's a big purple four on the screen. That stands for Additional Opportunities that we have taken to meet with council. We've conducted three of those four meetings and are trying to get the fourth one scheduled. We are open at any time to speak with any of you and hear your concerns and answer your questions. We've taken that opportunity with three of you and look forward to continuing to do that as appropriate as we go forward. It's been really, really instructive, and we hope to continue that dialogue. Also, on the screen is what's called a master copy of suggested changes to the L U O. Now, that is a long-term document. It's been around for, I think, several years, and it is a short shopping list of the changes that staff has perceived with respect to your current regulations. Okay? This is not to suggest that we're using this list as our direction, but rather an opportunity for us to check in with the people in the trenches on what's working and what's not, and what really needs to be changed so that from a day-to-day standpoint, they're able to move forward. I will, I'll stop for a second and say this. We have started to take the opportunity to look at your ordinance. One of the things that we haven't yet had a chance to talk with you guys about are what I'll call very simple bread and butter issues with respect to your L U O, okay? It's a venerable document. It was drafted in 1980. It was either the first or among the first Unified Development Ordinances in the state, okay? That's meaningful. Also, it's 40-some years old. Times have changed. Technology has changed. Your ordinance, as originally drafted, didn't allow you and has not allowed you to feed in and insert changes over the arc of time. What you've got instead is things added to the backs of chapters over years and years and years. The continuity in the material in the ordinance has been lost. There is no like material together. You have to know the entire document to know where anything is. Not feasible, not practical, certainly doesn't make it easy to administer. That needs to be changed, and that's a bread and butter issue, okay? The way that the language is organized in the text is prose-based in many ways. It's long paragraphs of sentences that have to be unwound. It's necessary for you to hold six, seven different ideas in your head as you're trying to understand, what does this language even mean? What is it saying to me? These are basic, again, bread and butter issues that don't get a lot of, they're not showy, they're not flashy, it's just basic, good code hygiene that needs to be reintroduced into your regulation. Your document has served you well. I'm not here to trash the document. It's a venerable document. However, like material together, short points that are properly numbered, well-illustrated code document is, that's where we're, what we're shooting for, and we look forward to talking with you guys on these bread and butter issues as we continue to move forward. Along those lines, let me tell you what we've heard before I go there. Again, we've had opportunities to speak with the public in three instances, we've met with the development community, we've met with our interested parties, we've met with you guys, we've met with the staff. We've heard support for more compact development throughout Carrboro, okay? We've heard greater pedestrian mobility is important. We've heard new development should provide more recreation space. We've heard three-to-five stories feels about right. Understand that. We've heard that we don't need such large lots for accessory dwelling units. Support for pre-approved designs and an easier review process for preferred development. That's a big term, right? A lot could be preferred, and that's something that we'll need to hone in on as we go forward. What is preferred development, and what does an easier review process look like? I will say that thus far, we haven't heard as much support for expedited development reviews where public input is limited. So there's some creative tension there between our desire to quickly get to an approval based on codified standards and the traditional sort of Carrboro practice of significant amounts of public engagement over long periods of time. And so that is an area that is ripe for us to explore and talk about going forward. How should the review process be changed to properly balance between our goals, right, as codified or set down in Carrboro Connects, and the practices and traditions that exist and that we still need to honor for the people who live here in terms of public participation and an opportunity to have impact on the outcome of development applications? So, an area for further discussion and more balance, but this gives you a sense of what we're hearing so far. We've also heard from facets of the community about the relative importance of design relative to other aspects, affordability, climate action, mobility, et cetera. So we're taking on that information and trying to work through the calculus of what is the, what are the opportunities for balance to come back and share with you guys and get some affirmative direction one way or the other. So that's what we've heard. I mentioned we looked at your code. What you see on this screen are a couple of things that detail material that we are in the process of preparing. The first is on the left-hand side of your screen, one of the things we always do is assemble a very detailed section-by-section review of your current regulation. That will go through what your current code says and our suggestions for revision based on Carrboro Connects, North Carolina law, court precedent, best practice, and what we've heard from the community. Okay? So we will be filtering what is in your current regulation through what we've heard and making recommendations to you about how that might change. That forms the basis of the code diagnosis, and it is something that we do want to prepare and provide to you guys this month or early next month at the latest. This will be a very long table, and I'm very sorry to say so, but it will absolutely be every bit of 70 pages long. It will also cover each and every section of your development ordinance. It is a shopping list, I won't call it a roadmap, but it is a shopping list of suggestions that we would make. We would anticipate more input from you, we would anticipate additional direction from you and from the community. This is the starting point based on what your current regulations say in light of where you would like to go. Along those lines, as part of this effort, we have also activated our other subconsultants on the equity review of your current regulations and the climate action review of the current regulations, again, with an eye towards what recommendations, what changes need to be made as we go forward. Also, answering frequently asked questions as those arise, as we talk to folks. I've got a slide on the screen up here about household and population growth. We are interested in talking with you guys either tonight or at a future meeting about your affordable housing goals, how that can be interpolated into future potential demand, what that might mean in terms of the 20-year out-year, you know, sort of development template that exists, how many more residential units can we expect, how much more non-residential floor area will be necessary or can be supported or both, and where should that go? Important stuff for us to talk about as we go forward. So that's why I put that slide up front. We are in conversation with that market demand analysis with Noel right now and look forward to sharing that with you. We will not get a definitive answer from them, rather what we will likely get is, if you do this, then you should expect that. And we'll probably have a couple of scenarios for us to talk about as we go forward, all We want to put an introductory video on the webpage that details the project, that talks a little bit more about what we've done thus far, what our intention is, what your intention is, what the U D O is and how it impacts the people who live here in Carrboro. I mentioned our desire to try to lean into that, to provide more video and more things that are easily digestible. I would love to, for this to be an exciting vision plan that had beautiful pictures of buildings and us talking about, you know, being a community. That's not what this is. And so trying to make it as palatable as possible for people to digest and understand. So we're exploring that. We're also exploring a more flexible, innovative approach to community engagement where we meet the people. And so that's an important move forward for us. We're excited about having a less rigid and more open-ended approach to public engagement. Our market and demand analysis, I mentioned a couple of times. Noel has prepared the initial version, they're working on the demand analysis, we're talking with staff about their issues, questions, and concerns about the data that we're using, et cetera. And then our code diagnosis, at least that summary table, the 70-odd-page table that I mentioned to you that summarizes your L U O to you in May or June at the latest. And that is my quick update. I'm happy to answer questions about this project or legislation, or pretty much anything you'd like to know about.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Do you actu, what updates do you have? I'm sorry, councilmembers, I usually, but maybe somebody was going to ask this. What updates do you have as it relates to legislation?
Well, I'm happy to report to you that Senate Bill 587, remember, that's the compromise bill with respect to down zoning. That's right. That has passed the Senate, so that has passed one of the two chambers. That's great news for us. Also, that bill, while characterized as a compromise bill, does strip out or does return the authority to local governments to downzone without obtaining consent. Very important news for us. As we contemplate changes to the litany of allowable uses and where and when those uses can be established in Carrboro, our ability to, you know, exercise proper flexibility about that, to implement your, you know, community plan, is being hopefully restored. It has made it through one chamber, we're hopeful that it will make it through the other chamber. That's very happy news. On the unhappy news front is 765, which was originally touted as the Regulatory Omnibus Bill, now affectionately referred to as Saving the American Dream. The, the, the sort of residential home ownership aspects of the bill have largely been stripped out but for communities over 125,000 in population and larger, okay? So as far as American dream as it relates to small-town North Carolina, this bill does not impact that in any meaningful way. This bill does strip your authority to make ordinances, apply police power. This bill does take away your authority to do conditional zoning in ways that are not already specifically authorized in the statutes. This bill limits your ability to have roadways that are more restrictive or apply more standards than N C D O T's minimum standard. In fact, this bill bars you from adopting any regulation that is more restrictive or more far-reaching than any corresponding provision in the statutes. So, very troubling, very difficult to cope with. There is a lot of movement on this and a lot of discussion, and also a lot of concern. And so that continues, and we will keep you posted on it. 765 did not make crossover. Crossover was May 8th, remember, that's the date after which a bill should have passed one of the two chambers, okay, in order to advance. But we know, over the last few years, that the crossover deadline has taken on ever less importance. The likelihood that these provisions will continue after crossover, I'd say is imminent.
Highly likely.
Yeah, right. I would agree, so I don't think that crossover is going to save us in this instance. But I will say there are numerous local governments across the state who are very concerned about 765 and who are actively advocating for its, you know, repeal or its, you know, major revision. And so those are some of the big changes that I can suggest to you.
Was there a House bill about environmental regulations?
Yes. House Bill 713 basically barred you from adopting any environmental regulation that was more restrictive than the state's minimum standard. That's sort of been overridden by language that's now in 765, which said, guess what, everybody? Not only can you not adopt an environmental regulation that's more restrictive, you cannot adopt any regulation that is more restrictive, okay? But for flood. It does allow local flood regulations to exceed minimum state standards.
Sorry I ask, but thanks.
I wish the news was happier. We are, we are tracking this, and, you know, it's our job to help you guys figure out how to navigate these things should they become law.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about how impactful that, you know, any of them could be, or all, as we continue this process, so I appreciate you for those updates. And also, one, I appreciate you for being willing to go out and meet folks, you know, figure out, you know, other ways to engage folks around the U D O, so thank you for that as well. I think I see Councilmember Palmer and nobody else right now, so go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I saw you on that street, on that open street day. That was a hot day, I remember that. So thank you for standing out there and greeting 44 folks.
Absolutely, thank you. Your staff deserves the thanks for that. They're the ones who suggested this more robust alternative approach to engagement, and we agreed, and it made a lot of sense to us, so we're happy to be involved in that.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Posada, I see his hand up.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things. The first one is more on the legislative side. Because 765 was moved into the Finance Committee, are you looking at? Because 765 was moved into the Finance Committee, are you looking at, do you think this is going to be like a bill? It's not an appropriation, it's a budget. Would it be thrown into the budget?
Yeah, yeah. They slotted in a financial piece that allows them to skirt the crossover rule. However, I'm not sure that it would have mattered because we can see this language show up in the appropriations bill on the last hour of the last day. There's no.
Yeah. That was kind of my thing, thought of, excited that did the PCS on like a day before crossover or something like that.
That's right.
So, okay. Thanks for doing an update on that. I was just wondering if there's any kind of information whether this is going to be rather than a Senate alone, it was going to be incorporated into budget discussions. You know, the House is now looking at the budget after a Senate one. So I was wondering if there is any information on that piece or, you know, speculation at this point.
That I don't know. That I don't know. I would expect a breather while we go through budget. I think they've done the heavy lifting that they, I think, set out to do before the budget process. I would say that we should watch for action starting back up on this August.
Okay. That makes sense. And then also, there doesn't seem to be any kind of movement on something similar in the Senate, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I will say that I have heard hearsay, hearsay, that the Senate was not going to support 765, but that is hearsay, and we should not bank on that.
Good hearsay.
It is good hearsay, and that's why I'm sharing it with you. But I will say that I have heard that from reputable sources, but we cannot bank on that. So.
Right.
Yeah, this is one of the things that I was thinking of when some of the changes were already made, specifically hearing from some of the folks with rural areas who are representing in the Senate. So, cool deal. And then on, so thanks for the update on that one. On the engagement piece, also echo the thanks for going out to the community. And I think one of the things that it's not going to be a surprise for anybody hearing this is as you continue to do community engagement and continue to do more person things, I would just highly ask or, I guess, expect that there would be language equity as we do.
Indeed.
I know that the staff has been working hard to make sure that there's a lot of different tools, so I encourage you to use as many of those as you can as you continue to engage folks in town.
Agreed. Your outreach department is an incredible resource, and, you know, we applaud you for it, and we expect to take advantage of it wherever possible.
These are.
Thank you, Councilmember Passata. Anyone else? Questions? I see Councilmember Frey and then Heather O'Donnell.
Thank you. Chad, I appreciate this presentation. We had a slightly bumpy one last time where we sort of felt like our direction wasn't being heard, and this is an improvement, although I do still wonder, you're sort of saying that you're positioning this as sort of a continuing tug-of-war between what you're hearing and that you'll come back and ask for further direction. But I do think in some cases, we've already given you some of that direction. So I would encourage you to not forget about that past direction as you're taking in additional info. I wanted to ask also for those who are listening or reading a summary at home, when's your next public engagement currently scheduled for?
I think we are coming to the June, it's a Jazz, and I'm sorry, I don't know the name of it.
Train.
Yes. I think that's our next opportunity.
All right. Wonderful. And you said you were planning to share the draft of the market analysis. Do you know roughly when?
We are waiting to have follow-up meetings with staff on data discussions. So hopefully soon. We would like to share it sooner rather than later.
Okay. I really appreciated your slide where you summarized sort of what we're hearing. But I want to repeat something that I had also said to Danny there, which is it's really easy for someone to say in isolation, yeah, you know, nothing more than four stories. We know from the much larger outreach effort that we had around the comprehensive plan, which we can't reproduce here, we already know that people consider affordability to be like, and also if you look at our town survey, right, it's coming up as if not the most important value that people mention, way up there in the top. So I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that as we're taking in feedback about what folks find aesthetically pleasing when they're not able to consider that in the context of what the impact would be on affordability of sticking to something that's affordably, that's aesthetically pleasing, you know, at the outset.
Understood. Understood the information that the community has given in Carrboro Connects with respect to the balance between aesthetics and affordability. Absolutely understand that. I think it will be some interesting discussion as we move into the downtown area. We've got small lots. We've got assembly costs. We have small floor plate buildings. And how do we manage those kind of external factors in terms of producing, you know, residential or mixed-use development that's going to render units that are in fact affordable?
Yeah.
Right? We see a lot of local governments across North Carolina taking a supply-side approach to residential development. What we're not seeing in many of those instances is actual creation of units that are affordable. We're getting more houses. That's great, but they're not affordable. And so we're watching that and trying to understand those dynamics and trying to piece together why and what we could do differently and share that for y'all's consideration. I can't say I have all the answers, but I can say we've noticed the folks who have just sort of gone in and said, give us more houses is, you know, we wonder if there's not more to the question than that. Just like you can't build your way out of traffic congestion with more lanes on the road, are there some other kinds of philosophical truths or underlying truths to the housing question that we're exploring now? So.
Fair enough. Although it's not clear to me that induced demand is a relevant category for housing.
Fair enough.
We do also have some, let's call it anecdotal, as it's still preliminary, coming in from Chapel Hill, that although I think looking at their use, looking at their unit production over the last few years, you wouldn't say that they've been particularly good at generating affordable units. They are nevertheless experiencing positive impacts on their rent.
Right.
And in particular, if you look at rent for Class B, Class C apartments, the ones where we're most concerned about preventing people from getting pushed out, they're actually having pretty good success there.
Right.
Which we can, we could get into a debate about filtering and all of that.
Right.
But where I wanted to go with this, I think actually to sort of depart from that point, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more about how you're starting to approach the drafting process, how you're planning to get into the new UDO initial draft. And the reason why I ask that is because sometimes this comes up as an update, but I think for the reasons that you've highlighted about the ancient origin, relatively speaking, of our document and some of its structural flaws at this point. I know you said that you weren't going to knock the existing code, but I will. And that's nothing against staff who have faithfully attempted to execute on that document for a long time. But as I think you know from the fact that Marty had a document going back to 2005 documenting all the things that he wished he could fix about it. It's a, while it's certainly a notable that Carrboro had one of the first UDOs, I don't know that that is a badge of pride because it historically tells you something about what the goal was of that document. For it to be created at that time focusing on, you know, focusing so heavily on character at a time when there was anxiety in the town about property values, about the racial makeup of town, right? That's reflecting potentially some of the sort of ugly underbelly of town politics at the time.
Okay.
And additionally, it is no longer fit for purpose. So where I'm going with this is that we're very much looking for this to not be a modification of the existing UDO, but a rewrite, right? This is supposed to be a from-scratch overhaul.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. We absolutely understand that. Let me say this. There are parts and pieces to the UDO that we are able to prepare and draft and bring forward regardless of what happens on Jones Street because there's, this isn't a question of statutory construction. This isn't a question about legality. It's a question of how is the document function? How is it assembled? We would suggest likely 10 chapters instead of 20. We would suggest, you know, short-numbered statements in place of prose. We would suggest process flow charts, summary tables, illustrations. We would suggest a heavy reliance on purpose and intent. One of the things that's really ironic about your current development code is many of the things that you want to do are in there. You just got to find them. And finding them is a real challenge. So how do we go through this document and pull out the good and get rid of the stuff that just we just don't need anymore, that's obsolete or isn't serving us? A lot of that work can happen without these pivotal underlying questions about how do we approach the district lineup? How do we approach, you know, incentives? How do we approach, you know, this idea of preferred development? I think we'll start with the low-hanging fruit while we wait for the General Assembly to fish or cut bait, so to speak, with respect to what they're going to do with our sort of enabling legislation. I do think, no matter what, we need an ordinance that's easy to read, easy to follow. I will put on the table a concern that is a possibility that we need to talk through and that we need some guidance from you guys on, okay? And that is this. It is possible, however unlikely, that you might be perceiving, you might be getting a new document that's longer than what you have today. Not because we have more words, but rather because we have more photos, because we've got more illustrations, because we're using white space and a place for the eye to rest. That's a possibility. And it's, I want to put it out there so that, you know, so that that information is available to you. We don't ever want to conceal anything from you or tell you something that's not so. We will attempt to make your regulation easier, shorter, simpler. And sometimes that can be a challenge. Sometimes that means being more deferential to the standards or to the staff. And that'll take a little getting used to in some cases. Not that I don't want to give it as a foregone conclusion. These are discussions that we're going to have. That code assessment gives us the shopping list of how we want to change what's on the books today. It will also identify some of the changes we want to make, but that's the start of the discussion. We want to hear from the community. We want to hear from you about what else do we need to do? Given these basic changes that we need to do to make this thing function and be readable, the easy stuff, what else do we want to do? And that's the discussion that we'll have. That discussion might take a few months. That's not going to stop us from getting started on the easy stuff, right? The stuff that's basic. We know that there's not going to be a whole lot of changes to the violations chapter. That's basically set down for us. We know that there's not going to be a whole lot of changes to the basic administrative aspects of the UDO, how we handle conflict, applicability, jurisdiction, that sort of thing. It's pretty basic. Districts, that's something we got to talk about. Uses, something we got to talk about. And then obviously, the standards. That's the heavy lift. The parking, the lighting, the landscaping, that stuff. And we've got things that we'll have to discuss. There's a lot of discussion about having, you know, a different transportation system, right? And so how do we do that? In growing communities, we're able to defray some of those costs by passing them on to the development community. In a mature community, the development community's come and gone. Where is that money going to come from to help us retrofit our transportation system? Something to talk about. We don't, you know, I'm not here to tell you we have the answer to that. I'm here to tell you we've got some questions and that we can talk about some options. So I guess the point that I'm trying to make is this isn't a we-go-off in the back room and write it all down and come and throw it on the table. It's something that we start with, and we work on the things that we can work on. And then when it comes time to get some feedback from you guys or the community, we'll have that conversation, and then we'll take the next step and work on the next pieces that we can. And that would be the iterative process that you should probably anticipate as we roll out, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Yes, that makes sense. Could you give us a general idea? Remind me of the timeline. When do you think we'll likely get the first, let's call it a outline, that helps us understand the general chapters, the broadest strokes of what goes into it?
Indeed. Indeed. That's probably a month or two after we finish the diagnosis. Our next interim deliverable product after the diagnosis is what we call the annotated outline. Think of that as the dress rehearsal for the UDO. It will set down the structure, the content. It will not have a lot of detail, but it will identify what's in there and what are the significant changes from what you've got in the current reg. So that'll be a couple of months after this diagnosis. And this process has served us pretty well. I mean, you know, Carrboro is different. We're starting to understand that, and we're open to, you know, making adjustments as we need to. But that general sort of figure out what's wrong, let's put something on the table about how we might change that, and then move into drafting, that three-step process has served us pretty well, and we think it'll probably work pretty well here as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So you said two months after we get the.
The diagnosis.
The diagnosis. So that would put us in the fallish?
August, September.
August.
Which frankly, given the state of legislation right now.
Yeah.
It's probably just as well that we're spending this time figuring out what we want to change and then have an opportunity to kind of regroup when we know what's going to happen. I will tell you that a lot of draft bills pin October 1st, 2025, as their effective date. That's a telegraph signal to us. However, in years past, we have seen the General Assembly continue its session past October. There's no reason to think that won't happen this time too. But hopefully, we'll know at least the contours of the major planning-related bills by October.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Heather O'Donnell.
Yeah. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Tina and Duncan and yourself. I really appreciated meeting with you and spending the time going through it. So thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
I don't know. Tina's there.
She's right there.
Yeah. Tina and Duncan and Chad, thank you so much.
No comments?
Nope. That is the comment.
Anyone else? Councilmembers?
Looking forward to more? Really appreciate it. Yeah, this is really, this is, I have found this checkpoint valuable, grounding, reassuring. I appreciate your time presenting it tonight.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to that code diagnosis, but this orientation is super helpful.
Understood. And I think that your staff has indicated that we should make these, our little visits more normal or more normalized. So we'll expect to come back before you in the next few months and give you an update again.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Councilmembers, that is the last item for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. So all in favor to adjourn this work session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Passata. We are adjourned.
Thank you.